Actually here, um, just to simply ask you if council has any further questions of us regarding the CIP.
No, we don't. Can we move on?
Hold on, Joe. Joe, I know what I'm saying, Joe.
Um, I guess before John gets finished, um, so I noticed that there's the Sheriff's Office and the Board of Elections office on there. Um, just throwing out an idea, you know, we have a variety of county departments kind of rented out in different places. We're looking at these two new offices. Is there a way to combine the building of both those offices into one? Would it save money and build more to move out, move some of the, you know, have like a government office building too?
Yeah, I, I think Mark, very interesting. We, um, Bob and I had occasion, um, one day here recently, uh, to meet with, with a local developer. Uh, who mentioned, uh, a rather large, rather large building is available. And the building would be a sufficient size to do something exactly like that. So, we, we, we are going to explore that. We are going to look at that. But, um, but there's, I don't think there's any question, but, uh, the manner in which county, county offices, if you will, are arrayed around the county, um, is not efficient. Uh, so we, we are looking at a couple of opportunities to begin to consolidate operations, uh, at, at a, a more centralized location, if you will, but, but it's a little premature. It's a little premature. All right. But that's certainly on the table.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yeah, then.
Refresh my memory about the structural and building mechanical issues with the Sheriff's Department and what's gonna happen to that building once we relocate.
Don't know what's gonna happen with that building at this point in time. There are really two, I'd say three significant issues with that building, Larry. First of all, um, the roof, uh, is not rated, uh, one hundred and twenty mile an hour wind.
I thought that was hurricane proof.
No. And, and so, so if, if, if we get a category three storm, uh, I think we have a significant risk of, of, of loss of a portion of the roof.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, at which point, Tom, we've got a real issue in terms of the Sheriff's Department being, being able to operate. The second issue that we have is that you'll notice that the, that the building itself is built at a grade that's lower than Nellin Road and it's, and it's slab-on-grade construction. So, as, as the water sheet flows down across that lot towards the building's foundation, we've got a chronic, um, foundation leakage issue. Uh, the, the other problem is that the building's heating and air conditioning systems are, are in bad repair. So, when, when you look at renovating that structure to correct those problems, when in fact its sizing and its layout is not really commensurate with the Sheriff's Department's needs today versus what they were when that building was built, you really look at, are we better off, um, building a new structure? Um, in terms of how we would repurpose that building, have not gotten that far.
Okay.
Just haven't gotten that far yet.
I understand, thank you.
Any other comments? Um, what Mark touched on, I mean, I, I can understand what, what the concerns are with that. Um, we're looking at, um, committing ourselves to a hundred thousand dollars for a project study, um, building engineering study. And at this point in time, we don't even know if we're gonna be using that building. I would really like, before we committed to, to that and the Board of Elections, I would like to see maybe a, a bigger plan, a broader plan of what maybe we might do as a replacement for those two instead of...
No, the hundred thousand dollar study is for the development of, of a new campus. It's not to look at the existing structure.
Structure of a new campus, what do you, I mean, you mean, I mean, what, where, why, how?
A new public safety building.
Well...
It's feasibility study for a new public safety building, not an analysis of feasibility.
Well, what is exactly, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not quite sure what's underneath all that. Um, we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars to find out what other areas in Wycomica County may be more suitable for Sheriff's Department or what buildings in Wycomica County might be a, a better choice of building.
It's basically, it's basically the, the first cut at the, um, at the design and feasibility and probable cost of that building.
Of what, of what building?
It's really your first step in, in what are called your soft costs, your A and E costs on a new building.
You confused me.
For a public safety.
Cause you said it was for a, a building and, and...
A new public safety building. That's what the eleven million dollars is proposed for in, in the, here's a hundred thousand dollars is a feasibility study.
Well, you got me completely confused. Feasibility, you got me completely confused.
They want a new Sheriff's Office, John, somewhere.
I understand that.
Is it for this county campus you're talking about?
No, it's, it's to deter, it's to determine, it's to go through. What we would do is we would hire, we would hire an architect and engineer firm. That architect and engineer firm would sit down with the sheriff and, and David Shipley would, would go through what, what their perceived needs are for a structure, determine what size that structure would be, what that structure would look like, and what the expected cost of that structure would be. You do that before you move into, okay, again, let's start down the road, spending eleven million dollars. So, so this is very preliminary design work for a new public safety building.
Where'd you come up with the eleven million if you haven't done the A and E? I guess that's, that would be mine. I mean, how do you know it's not eight million or fifteen million?
Uh, we, we went back to, we went back to the, the architectural firm that built the Salisbury Police Station and we asked them to bring those costs to date sized for our Sheriff's Department course. And they came up with a preliminary estimate. That's a preliminary estimate, that's a planning estimate. If you really wanna start down that road, now you've got to begin to dive into, okay, now let's sit down with the sheriff and his staff, David Shipley and his staff, and let's begin to design what a building like that would look at. Not construction drawings. You know, it's what the Board of Education does.
Yeah, I, I know, I know what you're doing, but the other problem...
They start off with, you know, this is our feasibility, you know, this is what it looks like it's going to cost if we proceed, if the building is this size and it's gonna house this number of students and, so that's really where we are.
But you're talking about a lot of different kinds of buildings. You're talking about the Sheriff's, uh, the city police off, city police building, but you're talking about a Sheriff's Office and emergency services combined on this building. So, I can't see what, where the relationship is there between those two buildings. Wouldn't, wouldn't our Sheriff's Office combined with Dave Shipley's office be a lot larger? A lot more space?
Yeah, and that's why...
Yeah, yeah, but I was, so I was wondering, wondering whether the eleven million, you know, how you come up with the eleven million?
From the architect, because we had that preliminary discussion with the architect.
But you're not talking apples to apples in the kind of building you're using.
It's the same, it would be, they would take the, the design of that building, which the sheriff liked. So, we would take that basic design for Salisbury City Police Department building. And we would then size it to be compatible with Mike, with Mike's needs and David Shipley's needs. And, and, and that's where they came up with a preliminary estimate of eleven million dollars. It's interesting when we sat with, uh, Executive Carter and I, sat with the developer last week, who I just referred to, and some square foot numbers were, were put on the table. And it was very interesting that they came very, very close to the eleven million dollar figure.
And you're talking about a building that's already existing?
It, no, it would be, uh...
I thought you just said there was an existing building.
That's an opportunity, but there are also several buildings that we were shown that were built ground up and we were given the costs of those buildings. And per square foot costs brought us right into the reins that we've got in this planning document. So, we think, we think it's probably a, a, a pretty good indicator of what a building would cost, but you've gotta, you've gotta take that first step and say, uh, you know, are we right, is eleven million dollars or is it fifteen million dollars? So, you go through that initial feasibility study, which is what's proposed for the 2017 actual hard spend.
Um, we're not, let's say we would approve this initial planning money next year, I mean, we're not locked in to a new building then, so next year we can reject it if, you know, whatever reason.
We have plenty of wiggle room.
The question is whether you build four eleven million dollar buildings, you know, whether you build a new Sheriff's Department, whether you build a new Board of Elections office, uh, you know, whether we decide to relocate, you know, the government office building or the personnel or the, the departments, whatever it might be. Um, we're doing one project at a time and we may be at a point in time now where we need to look at possibly consolidating different departments and, and, you know, instead of...
And we are looking at that, but, but, but there's a difference, there's a difference between us saying, well, perhaps the county administrative offices here in the GOP ought to relocate versus our Sheriff's Department being housed in a building that is very susceptible to catastrophic event under certain circumstances. We, we, we don't, you know, we can plan forever, but where we don't wanna be, where we don't wanna be is a, a serious nor'easter hurricane come through this county and our Sheriff's Department lose part of all, part or all of its roof or suffer significant enough flooding that they're out of operation. So, you know, there, there are acute needs, acute priorities, and, well, further down the road, we really ought to be looking at a consolidated campus. We're looking at both, but we need to get started on the, the, the real perceived priority right now. And the sheriff sees that as a very real priority, our Director of Emergency Services sees it as a real priority and a real vulnerability.
I understand that building's been around for a long time, that building's been around through a lot of hurricanes and a lot of storms, a lot of them. Matter of fact, every one that's hit Wycomica County since the building's been there, have hit that building at one point in time, it's still there. Um, again, um, I mean, I, I don't know. I just, I just think that some type of thought ought to be given as to whether or not we do look at what, what...
No, I'm listening.
I'm just concerned as to whether or not we do look at whether or not we're gonna do one building at a time or whether maybe this is the time to consolidate.
Well, well, I mean, and so a question I guess I've had is, you know, the Sheriff's Department is kind of a special county department. I mean, is it even feasible to consider having a building with like, let's say, the Sheriff's Department and the Board of Elections upstairs from that? I mean, or do, do we want the Sheriff's Department separate from everything else?
I, I would say the Sheriff's Office and emergency services should not be where the Board of Elections. I would think that it, I mean, my opinion would be that, and it's just an opinion.
Well, it's not, well, it's not the detention center, so...
You know, as worried as those people are at the election board about being safe.
They will be safe.
Yeah, they might not be, because that would be, that would be one of the places where there could be, you know, a prisoner get loose or something like that, so.
Well, I, I agree with Councilman Holloway. I've worked in the government and agencies are territorial. And when you have a Sheriff's Department, they have to be because a lot of things are confidential there. Um, that bill, you're right, that building's been there a long time, but, um, County Administrator Strasburg is right, it, it is going downhill and when you have a lot of rain, it, it will go in there. So, I do understand that part of it. It, it is kinda low. I hate to see houses and buildings that low. I'd rather see them elevated for that reason, but it's something we do need to consider though. We do need to have another work session and talk on this thing, consolidate and, it's late at night, it's hard to get our brains together and discuss all of these items.
Let me just add that, you know, it's, it's nothing more than a planning document. It's not gonna say that it's gonna happen in a certain amount of time. And having sat right where you are, Mark, I understand, we can pull that off, you know, next year if something's, you know, came up that we had another emergency, but it's a plan, I, when doing this CIP, I tried to look at what our worst case scenario would be is how much we'd have to spend. And, and Wayne's correct, we took at the Salisbury City Police Station and we took it and had, uh, George Miles and Bureau tell us what that would cost in today's market. And that's what we've done. So, it is just a, it's a preliminary planning thing and whether or not we even do that kind of building, I don't know, but we've got to look further down the road than where we are now. And like I say, it's, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but, um, I put it in there to, to make sure we knew about it.
When you say it's a preliminary, preliminary planning document, it's a hundred thousand dollar preliminary planning document.
We haven't spent a dime.
I know you haven't.
Right.
It's just like there was, there was two million dollars in for the continuation of
the, um, collector route. That was a gimme till I got elected.
But it's, it's, it's...
We hadn't spent any more money on it.
It can't really be a preliminary planning document. It is an expense that you're asking us to approve.
The CIP is a planning document, I understand.
Yeah, I, I do know that.
There's no corporation until you have the budget and the bond sale.
I know, I understand. I understand, but we're here for a reason and that's sort of evaluate what we think the first, second, and third step should be. What do we get ahead of ourselves?
Well, I suppose, I suppose what I would say is that if we don't believe that it's a good idea to study the relocation of the Sheriff's Department, then let's not do that. We believe it's a very good idea and that it's very responsible for us to do that. We believe the cost of that is gonna be a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and I, but I find it interesting because when you were, when we were looking about the Board of Education, I mean, the Board of Elections, we didn't do a hundred thousand dollar study. Uh, you guys were going out, you were going to local, you were going to Sperry Van Ness and you were going to different, uh, real estate, commercial real estate agents and trying to find what was out there in the market without a hundred thousand dollar study.
Because we had very specific, uh, directives from the State Board of Elections as to what we had to provide. So, we put an RFP out there for that. We don't have that for the sheriff. Somebody's gotta develop that. You need an architect to say, if we're gonna put something out to bid, this is what we're looking for.
There's a, there's a...
Completely different, two different...
There's a, I'm sorry. There's a little different, John, um, believe me, I don't wanna spend...
I can believe that.
I don't wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars looking around either, but you got buildings, Sheriff's Offices, you're gonna have jail cells in there for holding cells, for holding people, you know? There's gonna be specialized electronics that's gonna have to be put through this building when you're talking emergency services. Um, entrances and entrance ways to secure, it's a little different than the Elections Office.
Very special.
You know, a lot, a lot more specialized. Um, I think it would be great if you could find a building already there.
Then we could retrofit.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be great.
That would be our goal, but I, that's not the worst case scenario. I need for us to plan for our worst case scenario.
I don't think that would fit. I just don't think you could retrofit. I think it'd be a cost you fortune.
You mean a jail, a Sheriff's Office, yeah. It's gonna be tough, it would be tough to retrofit.
But that's when we call in, you know, Pete Bozick and people like that, they know what to do, so.
Now, I'm just thinking that a hundred thousand gives me heartburn too, but that's what you gotta do. The Board, like you said, the Board of Education, they have that fee and then they do the A and E fee, it just, it happens.
We voted one point two million for the Board of Education for West Salisbury.
I know.
So, that was for the same thing that we're getting ready to ask you for a hundred thousand for, for, for a building.
Has there ever been a, you know, our, our detention center was built with a set of plans from World, was it York, Pennsylvania, Matt? We were under the gun at the time, of course, that was before my time, but Matt was here, um, you know, from the Justice Department to build a new jail. Has there ever been a thought about researching, um...
We did ask him about that. I mean, that was one of the first reasons why we went to the city police station because they already have those plans. So, if, if we could...
But I mean, there's other places in the country is what I'm saying.
Oh, we've actually been to Fruitland too, actually toured Fruitland's city police station.
We don't wanna bang that expensive, do we?
Actually, it's smaller than the Salisbury City Police Station, but, you know, the point was we toured that to see, see if those needs were fit, so, um, whatever we can find would be great.
Yeah, but I, you know, I just Googled new Sheriff's Offices here on the Bureau.
And Ernie would have more knowledge on that than I would, but, you know, we've gotta go with what Mike says and, and, uh, Dave Shipley says. I mean, you've been in stations and...
Yes.
You know what we need.
I've never been to police stations much, thank you.
Not with handcuffs, anyway.
So far, anyway.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lennox, how, how are you?
Thank you for, uh, keeping us on the agenda tonight and continuing the discussion about the comprehensive plan and some of the major components of it, including the growth tier map. Um, just wanna give again a little bit of overview to keep talking about these same words over and over. And I know it's, uh, a little bit daunting about how all this works together and how a growth tier map is connected to the comprehensive plan. Um, this is our third meeting, our third work session with the council. During the first two meetings, we really discussed the overview of what the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012 is, or the Septic Bill, and some people refer to it, growth tier map. Um, we got into that and we started looking at how it related to our local zoning and our local land use, in which we've gone through and we've prepared maps and we've showed a draft assessment of what we think the draft tier map would look like for Wycomica County based on our current situation. The last meeting, we started talking about trying to find ways to increase our local autonomy and our flexibility within this program or within this law, state law. And we reviewed about how we can make some potential, potential hybrid or program instead of just a tier map to submit to the state for their review and their comments as part of this comprehensive planning update. And when we started looking at the amendments, one of the most concerning things that we've heard over the past three years, which was a major challenge to implementing this back in 2012, was the restrictive nature of what we refer to as tier four or being limited to minor subdivisions. And we're trying to find a way, a happy medium, so to speak, to where we can have the ability to advance subdivisions consistent with our zoning, however, try to mold it within the framework of what the state expectations are. And we talked about potentially with this hybrid, bringing up the ability to amend the tier map purely as a result of two functions, a development proposal for review by the Planning Commission, the Health Department, as well as an existing development that might be served right now in individual septic systems that because of certain health, health concerns, it might need to go to a public, community, or shared system. So, those were kind of the big amendments that we talked about and where we left the conversation in our last meeting was process. What do we do? How do we make this work? What's the administrative components behind it? And as we had left off with that discussion, what was recommended for consideration of the council was looking at submitting a growth tier map for the review of the Maryland Department of Planning. Again, the Maryland Department of Planning does not adopt or approve this map. It's ultimately the function of the county council if they wanna adopt a growth tier map as part of their comprehensive plan or not. When looking at that, we would look at, again, it would be going through the Planning and Zoning Commission, you would have to get a preliminary plan approval, you would have to have preliminary approval from the Health Department that you can exceed over the minor subdivision or over eight perks. And then we kinda got to that point where we started spitballing ideas, well then, what would the role of this legislative body be? And as one council member remarked, he didn't want the planning component to become so political that it was purely controlled by this legislative body. So, we took the instructions to come back and, you know, try to formulate a process that might be amenable for the council's consideration. It's the recommendation of staff that we still consider the first two caveats as very valid, um, very valid milestones or very valid indicators to get the process moving if an amendment is needed. It really comes down to what is the function again of the council? So, one of the points we're discussing tonight is the consideration of if you can achieve the preliminary approvals from the two aforementioned bodies that we talked about, then there would be a notice to the council and it could be prescribed for a certain set amount of days for conversational purposes, I'm just gonna recommend sixty days, that once this, once these, the subdivision or preliminary development plan has been approved by the Health Department, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the council would have a notice and a sixty day period to act on it. Not act on the subdivision per se, act on the proposed amendment to the growth tier. If there was no action in sixty days, the amendment to the growth tier would automatically occur and it would be handled administratively.
So, we sort of piecemeal developments out, every development's gonna have to become a legislative process?
Every development will not become a legislative process. The only developments that will become a legislative process are those that would necessitate a tier change to achieve more density.
Keith?
Yes, sir.
As part of that approval process, wouldn't it result in a change of the development area from tier one, from tier four to tier one?
That could be one consideration. It could also be from a tier four to a tier three.
Well, from a tier, from a tier four to a tier something.
Yes, it's going from a more restrictive...
And wouldn't that, wouldn't that require, uh, an amendment to the comprehensive plan?
No, as, as we've, as Jack and I have discussed this week when looking at this issue, we do not feel it was MDE, the Maryland Department of Planning's intent, that every time there's a change to a tier map, that it's gonna open up or require the plan to be opened up to make that amendment. Case in hand or case in point, for example, when areas in the county get annexed into the city, well, we've designated a land use with that property when it's in the county plan. However, just because a function of annexation occurs, we don't go back into the plan and then automatically remove that land use designation.
All right, and I may ask you another, a different question then. Same scenario, would it not, uh, if it was gonna result in a significantly higher density of development, it would require a, an amendment to the county water and sewer plan, would it not?
There's gonna be situations where that is accurate. When it's gonna, when it's gonna kick in an amendment?
So, if it's one of those scenarios, will that fit in a sixty day window? Will that process fit in a sixty day window?
It's a very good question. Um, going back to your one example about what would necessitate a water and sewer plan amendment, if you went from a more restrictive tier to a less restrictive tier using a public, community, or shared sewer system. So, you're not on an individual sewer system, you're on some type of package treatment plant. That is gonna necessitate a water and sewer plan amendment and thinking out loud, I think that's gonna necessitate MDE approval as well as this body serving as the Urban Service District Commission.
Yeah.
So, therefore, we might have to fine tune the time or notice to council based on what application or situation that we're applying it to.
My point is that I'm, I'm concerned that, that all that would not, might not fit within a sixty day window.
I think it's, given your example, it would be very challenging. Giving the example of going from some more restrictive tier to a less restrictive tier without the need for public service, the sixty days was also, I think that is achievable to get in front of this body.
But how, how, how likely is that to occur, to, to go from a, a more restrictive to a less restrictive tier? I'm trying to think of circumstances where that might occur. Can you, I guess it's...
I mean, I mean, would that be something like, you know, if someone wanted to put a, you know, development down Athel Road, for instance, it's in tier four, we'd have to change that to, I mean, so it'd be something like that.
That would be development out in the agricultural zone district of Wycomica County.
Sure, and if we found that the property had the good soils ratified by the Health Department, could meet the county zoning and subdivision goals otherwise, then that's an example of a tier four to a tier three. Using Mr. Kramer's example, and I think Keith, we have to add a little caveat, you said two criteria, perhaps it's three criteria. It's Health Department, it's Planning Commission, and, well, it's also the council if a central system is required.
That is correct. That is correct.
So, right, so that would be a third one. So if a central sewer system is required that has to go through you, that's one of the threshold requirements. So we wouldn't get bogged down in that 60-day period because you would have seen it already. Because as you know, that's going to take a lot of your time and a lot of their design.
Matt, you were talking about where you would go in the reverse part of it.
Yeah.
In a situ, I know, Jack, correct me, or Keith, correct me if I'm wrong here. You'll take a development that's been approved, that's gone through it and gone from tier four to tier three, and then we have another downturn like we had, their taxes automatically get increased, correct? When they, when they're lotted out, I guess you would call it. And the farmer wants to, the owner wants to turn it back into ag, so then wouldn't it go back, would it go back to a tier four? In other words, if he withdrew his.
It's not as.
Would that happen that way?
I don't, I see your point, but once a, once a property has been subdivided and it loses its agricultural exemption or its agricultural assessment.
It can go back.
I, it's not, what I'm, what I'm getting to is, it's, it's not a simple matter to go back. It's not a simple matter to, to, to destroy that subdivision, is it, Jack?
They have been undone before, but that's really a private initiative.
That's what I mean. Yeah, I mean, it would be, it wouldn't be us doing it, but they would revert.
Right, and that could happen and someone could request to go from a three to a four. What Keith has described is we're trying to think of a system that happens as automatically as possible.
Well, this, the Rayner Farm out on Mount Herman Road, isn't that a situation where it was?
They had proposed, oh, sorry, I was thinking of a different Rayner Farm.
Oh, there's two.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the one that, next to the Mobile Home Park. Others, both of them were approved, weren't they?
I think so. I'm not sure they were recorded.
Okay.
There would be bigger challenges for that property owner to dissolve the subdivision and go through that regulatory process than a mere change for the, for the tier map. However, those provisions, while they might not be the norm, there, there has to be language to allow or afford those types of exceptions that will occur, and they will be the rare instances.
What we're talking about is language in the comp plan, which is linked to the tier map that provides for an automatic revision when they meet certain criteria. I know there's concern about the council having to look over the shoulder of the Planning Commission, and we don't want that. Seriously, if neighbors want to challenge and approve subdivision, there's a path for that.
That's.
They appeal the Planning Commission to the Board of Zoning, to the Board of Appeals. That's already there. So we're trying to make this as automatic as we can for those folks who need that flexibility.
But there's still the idea that there is a way for the council to get involved.
Absolutely.
If you choose.
Yeah, I mean, you know, as we may be able to see from current events, that there, you know, there is a call sometimes for politicians to get involved in approving or disapproving certain businessmen's actions. And right now, the system is basically set up so that if you meet certain criteria, you get it automatically. We set the laws, we don't get to stand in judgment of what one person gets to do. And that's, we're a nation of laws, that's the way it should be. We're not, we're not a third world country where we get to pick winners and losers, the politicians do. So it makes me very uncomfortable that we bring in any sort of way that the council could, for whatever reason, inject politics into it. I mean, the Planning Commission, as I understand it, basically is there to follow the law. I mean, you know, we don't get, the Planning Commission, we don't necessarily let our personal views on certain things go into, you know, sign approvals or things like that, just because we think it might be a good idea, is what the code says, we're there to figure out what the code says. And so you, you see my uncomfortableness with, again, council members can do whatever they want based on whatever whim they want, regardless of what the law says, and that, that makes me real uncomfortable.
And it is a delicate balancing act of the role of the Planning Commission related to the comprehensive plan, which really is responsible for preparing it and forwarding it to the council to ultimately adopt and to legislate. So we are cognizant of that. So we're trying to build in provisions that if an action was necessary of the council, there would be that check one or that fail safe, that there would be the opportunity for the council to opine, whether it was a function of a growth tier designation change or going to Mr. Kramer's scenario, whether it was a function of a water and sewer plan amendment to provide for public service of an area that's currently on individual, well, in septic or septic.
It seems like your decision point's been narrowed here. Everything Keith described works and leaves you with two alternatives. Do you want the council to act as a fail safe? Or do you lean more towards Mark's description that says, keep the council out of it, just let the system work?
Well, most people. Most people think that this whole idea of tier maps and, because it's been portrayed so, so negatively through the state of Maryland and their heavy-handed, you know, their heavy-handedness, it's given this whole process somewhat of a bad name. And it's, you know, overregulation, overburdening regulations again and again. I don't look at tier maps as that process. We try to find out what is fair and establish what's fair through the tier maps. But the tier map's purpose isn't to restrict and to create more regulations, it is to create guarantees. So that when someone buys a piece, a piece of property or owns a piece of property, they know what to expect around them. And we're already seeing right now the, the surprises with people who are living in an agricultural district and all of a sudden they're shocked because they have chicken houses next door. We need, I, I see the tier maps as establishing something more definite that says you're in this particular part of the county, this is what you have to expect from here on out. I appreciate the wiggle room, but I'm also concerned that we'll be changing the dynamics of something that, you know, wasn't anticipated by those who could be mostly impacted.
That, that could be one unintended consequence that this council will have to consider. It's balancing what the unknowns of the future are versus trying to provide some flexibility. And it's a very tough decision because there is no certainty. Nothing is forever. But as council member Joe Hawley said, we're, we're just trying to find a starting point. This won't be an end point. If we, if the council elects to move forward with a growth tier map that ultimately ends up in an adopted comprehensive plan, it can be evaluated and amended within the processes that we have and the abilities that we have provided by the charter.
And it probably will be eventually because we all know technology changes and you're going to see, you know, standalone facilities are, are becoming, they're going to become less expensive and they're going to become more practical, actually. And as you and I both know, the individual septic systems aren't, aren't working.
Things that came up tonight.
The package, the package systems are probably the only option for putting community systems outside of municipalities. That is, having that density of development and not the annex. The reason, the reason I say that is the difficult, the difficult, the difficulty in, in trying to build a conventional wastewater treatment plant and have an outfall in Wycomico County would, would be very difficult, I think.
One of the things that came up tonight during the poultry discussion was, the lady said this poultry operation is just a mile and a half from the city. Or whatever, a half a mile from the city, whatever it was, the distance she said. I guess my thoughts are, what do you do, you know, you strike this line of tier three and tier four, tier two and tier three. Say you use Mount Herman Road or Ocean City Road or Naylor Mill Road as an example, whatever road you want to use. So what do you do when you have somebody living on the south side of that road, but across that road, it's entirely different? And they're coming along and they're not happy, and so that's when the council has to get involved, right? That's when it.
That's when the council, given what we're proposing, would have the opportunity to get involved, but also there would be the level of involvement at the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. And there's going to be those hard lines that you defer to. They exist within the county zoning, they exist within the water and sewer plan, and sometimes it's not as convenient as having the actual barrier or boundary that separates it. And it's going to be a physical boundary, which more than likely will be infrastructure-based such as a road.
Where do you, where do you, where should we go from here?
I think is, Matt, Mr. Kramer brought up a good point tonight, and I think Jack was able to respond that we have three fail safes now that we're looking at for the various scenarios. At this point, if, if the council is comfortable with the process, I think it's up to the department working with the legal department to go back and draft the program language. And then it's going to be at the direction of the council if we want to review it in its entirety, which is probably going to be recommended. Again, there are moving pieces here. And subsequently, if the review goes well, then I think we ought to consider sending something to the Maryland Department of Planning for an informal review of the program, not just the map. They've already had the review of the draft comprehensive plan. So we've already achieved that step.
So it's going to require public hearings before we do that?
It, it does not require a public hearing whatsoever where we will end up.
I don't mean legally, I just mean.
That would be at the discretion of the council. I think that's a consideration that the seven of you will have to make.
Could I suggest you'll have a better grasp on your comfort level with that, once we unfold some of the comprehensive plan to you? So you can see how you feel about that?
And wouldn't you also agree that maybe there would also be an increased comfort level by waiting and getting the Maryland Department of Planning's comment, if there are any comments? And using that as a gauge and we can continue the comprehensive plan discussion and the interim.
We would like to get into the comp plan with you and so you can see how eventually that land use plan.
Everything connects.
And how it all connects. Obviously, we can talk about this forever and keep coming back. At some point, just like the zoning, you have to draw the line somewhere.
Right, and it is a tough decision. However, to facilitate this decision for the council, we've already delineated the line concerning.
Which was your line, really?
We're, we're using what's existing and we're not changing that.
It just seems to me it would have been simpler, we could just stuck to local zoning and not have this from the state.
It would have saved us a lot of time.
Could I ask, if it's appropriate, Mr. President, to see if there's general guidance on, does the council want to be involved after, potentially involved, potentially, after these things take effect? Or do you want to step back and let the system run?
Can I add?
Yeah, please.
I think there's two parts of it. Let the system run, as you're talking about, if it merely is an administrative amendment that does not require a water and sewer plan amendment.
Yeah, oh, sure, you'll have to be involved with that. That's one of the criteria.
As long as that's stated upfront.
Sure, if it's a central system, you have to be involved, and that's one of the initial criteria.
But with this system working, if, if something were to occur like we had, like we all experienced tonight and in recent weeks, there has to be, there's only one legislative body in, in Wycomico County and it's people behind this table. And if something occurs that might require a legislative remedy, the council has to have a way to get to it.
That's what we presented this evening, and that's what Mark commented on earlier.
I think the, I think there has to be some, some avenue of recourse.
And sometimes it's a really tough decision.
And if you choose not to take advantage of that recourse, that's your choice.
Conversely.
So you get the notice, you see it, you hear from folks, or you don't hear from folks, even better, and you decide whether to take action.
Yeah.
Either way, we have to make it, either way, it's, we're making a choice, though.
Correct. Either way, you are making a choice.
No action is always an action.
But hopefully it would be an exception to the rule.
Yeah, all right. But in the reverse, if you didn't have that option, you would be faced with those suggesting you take emergency action.
Where you're currently at now because you didn't have the ability to take action.
You didn't have that stopgap.
So we don't want to remove that.
Good.
I think so.
Good. And if it's acceptable and depending on your work schedule, because I can kind of sense that it's filling in, we'll tick up the comp plan, you know, whenever you're ready for us.
Maybe you know, I sit down, we'll piecemeal it out over the next few meetings and create absolute deadlines as well.
And we'll be.
Good approach.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for sticking around.
Next item on the agenda is the, a letter of opposition to Senate Bill 166, House Bill 243, that you all have. Joan Strang is here, in case you have any questions on this bill or its impact, have you all had a chance to review it? Joan, what, could you just give us a brief overview because it was put on our desk at the last minute? If you could just, if you don't mind, just telling us what the bill is and what you feel is the, your concerns. Let us know for the public who you are and your whole deal.
My whole deal.
Yes, who you represent. We don't need to know where you live and all that stuff.
Oh, okay. Joan Strang, Vice President of Government Affairs for the Maryland Building, Building Here it goes. MBIA Industries Association, they have a long name. This bill was discussed at our Legislative Committee meeting on Monday. Hearing was held today. It's a bill on land use, and it really puts a lot of restraints on what we can and cannot do for land use, and it will affect your comprehensive plan. I'd like to read something to you that really is the center of why we are so upset about it. Senate Bill 166 and House Bill 243 would overturn the ruling of the Maryland Court of Appeals against Bell and Harwood, and in doing so, would also reverse a series of functional, functional court cases dating back nearly 50 years. Provisions in state law and county charter provisions that are the current basis for the right to appeal local legislative actions. In place of the historic case law relied upon by the court in ruling against Bell and Harwood, Senate Bill 166 and House Bill 254 would codify the unsuccessful arguments made by the appellate plaintiffs. So this is really the basis of this bill. They're trying to wipe out this decision, and that would put us back many years.
What would the tangible result be if that bill were to pass?
Anybody who has property that is maybe a thousand feet from a zoning change or a comprehensive plan change would have the ability to take action in court against that zoning change and tie up that property for years on end.
I can get, Jack, I think wants to say something.
Did you say?
Whenever it's appropriate, Mr. President.
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Jack.
You're welcome to say something, Jack.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. I'm not familiar particularly with, with the case that Joan describes, but for the sake of Wycomico County, the most dangerous thing about this bill that I can see is that it, it practically has no definition for what is standing. That almost anyone alleging anything can tie things up and first tie up our attorneys, our legal expense, defending first of all whether someone even has a place at the table. So I think I understand sort of the general purpose. It's not that I'm totally opposed to it, but in the case, in the form that it's written. And now I'm starting to understand that it had a more clearly defined end, but the unintended consequence is it opens up all of your actions, all of our actions to challenge by virtually anyone, or certainly an extended argument.
Yeah, it does. It's a terrible.
For any reason, for an, or extended argument, again, about whether or not they even have the rights to be sitting here discussing the item. I had filed some comments last, last week, it was sort of a deadline regarding fiscal effects, and, and I would recommend your opposition as well.
I move that we sign the letter.
Second.
The MACO Legislative Committee had a discussion about. The MAKO Legislative Committee had a discussion about it yet last, last week.
Right.
And the Legislative Committee is very much against it.
They, they had a hearing today, and MAKO, MBIA, the Realtors, and the Maryland Chamber all testified in our session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention, Joan.
I'm sure I'll have many more.
Let us know, let us know.
What a lovely year.
Mr. Roser has conceded his, his closed session, so at this stage, I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tonight, before we do that, I sent an email out last week about the collections from the nursing home and some of the issues. Can we get a letter together on that?
Matt, I asked you yesterday about where we were.
Yes. The county executive is trying to get a meeting set up with the secretary of the department that oversees the local department of social services to try to build fire under them so that they'll reimburse them. Apparently...
Okay.
Apparently Wycomico Social Services doesn't have the best reputation on the shore in terms of being timely in its action, particularly in this kind of thing.
So we don't take any action until county executive does something?
No, 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 we could do it whenever we want.
Yeah.
You can do, yeah, you can do whatever you want.
It was suggested that it be...
The nursing home, the nursing home is under the authority supervision of the county executive.
Right. It was suggested that it be allowed to go out with both parties' signatures, and that's what I was asking this morning, where we were with it, and evidently, the executive branch has decided that they want to pursue other avenues first. I don't know, I haven't had a discussion with them.
I think, I think the, I think the thought was that a face-to-face meeting would, would accomplish more than writing a letter.
But it's still on the table, if you want to do it, Joe, we'll do it.
Well, might as well get, let's give them a couple of weeks, I guess. Give them the benefit of the doubt, and then go that route, yeah.
And then write the letter.
Then write the letter, yeah. And then write the letter, yeah.
And train a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. So moved. Oh, my. Yeah. It's a long night, isn't it?
Yes.
What are you laughing at?
How long was that string?
Huh?
How long was that string? Long as it is.
Yep. I had to double the time.